Close, please, thank you. Good evening, members, and welcome to this full council, 128th of August 2024, and welcome to our residence, or anybody else who's watching online, to this meeting. Firstly, can I ask you to turn your mobile phones off or on to silent? And don't use them while we're in the meeting, please. Thank you all. Okay. Item one, apologies. I've got apologies from councillors Austin, Shank, Huxley and Hudson. Are there any more apologies? No? Okay, thank you.
So you're right, somebody? Okay.
Are there any declarations of interest and items on the agenda, please? No, so we take as a knowing, thank you. There is no public participation. We've not had any questions in from members of the public. I shall move on to item four, which is minutes of the council meeting. And for you to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the council held on the 31st of July 2024.
Members, I've had to amend the minutes to show that councillor Huxley was present. I've done that already, she contacted me. So if you're happy to accept it, then you can.
We are. Members, any comments on the meeting, on the minutes? Sorry. No, so can I have a proposal for councillor Nixie? Seconda, please. Councillor Ara, all those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's approved, thank you very much. Right, and item five. Finances, including grants, and we've got four parts to this. First part. To receive a report of payments from the first to the 31st of August 2024. And the council is asked to note the payments authorised by the town clerk and RFO. At a total of £4,550.24p. And approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO. Which the total of that is £45,229.82p. Members, any comments in relation to that?
I once again pulled out the Radford House spend. ECU City, £425.50p. It says for the month of August. But I can't believe that could be our electricity bill for one month.
Unfortunately, it is, mate, councillor.
That is true, yes. Could we have a breakdown of exactly what we're running there? I can't, I can't believe a month, a few times up by 12, it's a huge amount of money. Crown Gas and Power was £23.44, so at least the, the gas supply is a bit better. But I actually worked out the Radford House spend as a percentage of the below threshold spend. And it's, it's 9.8%. So I continue to be really concerned. And they're both revenue costs, so they're ongoing costs. And they're both going to go up as we move into the winter. I continue to be concerned about the spend at Radford House. If we look at the, above the threshold, if you let me finish. There were two payments, both staffing, I think, but then we've got wages confidential, £32,000, obviously. And what I wanted to know was there was a cost for June, which was £2,150. And then a cost for July, which was again, £1,150. But it wasn't, it said it's contractor Radford House event. So was, is that the staff that we presently have for Radford House? Or was that an additional cost on top? And if so, what was the event?
Bring it.
Okay, this is our contractor who arranges events at Radford House. This is her invoice, so you've got an invoice there for June, July. And it's the hours she's worked bringing people into Radford House.
Again, on top of that, out of that £44,000, £45,229.82p, the over the threshold. There's a, there's a, there's a cost of 32, just over 32,000 for wages, which I'm not going to mention because it's confidential. If you remove those wages, you've got a cost of £12,920.70p for that period. And if you look at that event manager's money, that represents 25.5% spend for August. Which again, makes me really worried. I'll come back to Radford House, but I just want to, there's also rat bait being used on the allotments. There's a, there's a cost for rat bait. Are we, I can't believe we're using rat bait on the allotments. Is it, is it environmentally friendly rat bait?
Up to the rat.
Well, rat bait can be extremely dangerous for other animals. And also the portaloos come in at £1,056. I wonder, could we have a comparison of the cost of the portaloos composed to the previous composting toilets? In, in that discussion over the allotments, quite a lot of the allotment owners who spoke to me said they don't like the portaloos. And they think they're not environmentally friendly because they use chemicals. So it would be interesting to see if we made that decision based on a cost saving. So they're, they're the two things. Going back to Radford House, I'm sorry, I'm going to continue. I did ask, I sent them. I did ask, I did ask in February for certain information because I, I sit here as an elected member who has some responsibility for checking we're doing the right thing. I did ask for a number of documents back in February, none of which have come my way. So I will be resubmitting that in the hope that I will receive this information. It's a year, I sent it on February the 21st. I was particularly interested in the business case. It's interesting because members who share my role of view scrutiny at TDC.
Councillor Lee, sorry, sorry. We're dealing with the items that are in here, not what's passed, what's been done past. I'm quite happy, but anything that you have, send it to me. All right, send, send your queries to me. And I will discuss that with the town clerk and then we'll get a full, proper answer.
Could I?
What you want.
Okay, could I ask?
You can't do it this evening.
I, I would like to ask that my concerns are minuted in the minutes over the ongoing future potential liabilities of Radford House. I'd also like it to be minuted that as a councillor that sits on this board, I don't feel as if we, at the full council meeting, have been given the right information or enough information to make decisions going forward. And I certainly feel, although we love Radford House, that it could be a thing that could run away with us and a liability in the future. And that's what I'd like me to.
As far as, as far as that's concerned, any information that you've had is correct information.
I've had no information.
No, you just, you just said the information that you've had was either correct.
I said, right, that was, I've had, I haven't had.
So, no.
None of us have had.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, and that's why I've said, if you email me, tell me the things that you want, I will ensure that that is done and you get that information.
Chair, you responded to my email that I sent on the 21st of February. So what I'll do is I'll resend that. I think I copied in all RTC councillors.
So I would have asked the town clerk to do that, obviously.
Yeah, that email was sent to the town clerk and all of RTC councillors on the 21st of February. And today I've received no information at all.
Send that to me and you will get, you will get what it is that you asked. Councillor Green, you say?
Just a couple, just a couple of comments. Radford House, at the moment, is an experiment. We're investigating what the ongoing cost will be, or would be. And we have told you before, before we commit ourselves to Radford House ongoing, you will get the full information as to what it's likely to cost. About in the rat situation, I've already asked officers to investigate the amount we're paying for rat bait, whether it's necessary, whether there are alternatives.
Sure. Councillor Nixie.
Two things, first of all, just, and it's not the place, but I will just answer a question. So this summer, I've been in a lot of meetings with Radford House Town Events promoter, Susie Humphries, plus the business plan gentleman Adrian, Paul, our project manager, and so on and so forth. So I've had a, a summer of meetings to try and get all the information that has been required to come to a meeting for the council. So that's what I've been doing over the summer. I'm getting the garden ready for the 8th of September, I'll slip that in. But, but there is, there is that coming. And with regards, so to go to the matter in point, which of course is the monies that we're, we're looking at at the moment. I, I do want to point out that one, we are getting some income. As councillor Green said, this is a meanwhile use scenario. So obviously, you know, prices change as and when. But we are getting money in and the technicians also use that building, which is, you know, our cost. So that is part of it. It's not just like it's an expense for Radford House. That cost, if we didn't have Radford House, a lot of that cost would actually be put somewhere else for the technicians if they were to be somewhere else. So it doesn't go down to zero just if we didn't have Radford House. I just wanted to point that out.
Did I come back, Chair?
Can I just see if there's anybody else who wants, is there anybody else who wants to make any comments at all? No, councillor me?
I, I mean, I sit on overview and scrutiny and councillor, councillor David Green actually asked Louise, asked you for a feasibility study on the plans that TDC were coming forward to. We don't have that, we don't have overview and scrutiny at RTC. But I did ask for the business case and plan. And it is possible to come up with a working feasibility study that would give us the best case scenario for what that building needs to make to cover our costs. And that should be a working document that is made available to all councillors as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, we'll take that on board, thank you. Right, members, if there's no other comments, can I have a proposal for acceptance?
I suppose that we note.
Note.
What we're supposed to note and accept.
Yes, the payment, the payment. Is there a seconda for that? All those in favour, please show. Those against, anybody, no, thank you, that's carried. All right, item two is to consider report from the deputy town clerk and a CFO, financial officer, and the recommendations of the grant scrutiny panel on the funding applications detailed below. Now, before we get into this. Again, I wanted to thank our group of, of the panel, our members on the panel for the good work. It's difficult, it's a difficult thing to sort out. So I want to thank them for that. I do not intend to go through every single one of these items. There's a recommendation from the scrutiny panel, which personally I find acceptable in all cases. There is one that is, that we do need to discuss. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to discuss that part of that first. Which is?
It's, members, it's RF10 Residence Association of Paradise and Ramsgate Historic Quarter Scheme. And it's for Captain Abbott's Garden. They wish to reuse a derelict piece of land, which they provided photographs of. If I can find that for you, if you wish to see it again. They've sought funding from KCC and are awaiting decision for three and a half thousand. This is to do with clearing and surveying the site, planning and design, trees, shrubs and hedges, paving, benches, information boards, signage for plants, security camera and lighting, heritage lamp standard and labour for the, the above work. They are asking for.
For the amount?
Three thousand.
I've got that wrong, members, please, there was. Need to double check that application. Yeah, they're asking for three and a half thousand. But the breakdown, of course, is coming to. To, yeah, sorry, that is a typo, apologies. It is three and a half thousand that they're asking for. Those, that's the picture, those are the pictures of the area that they're looking to tidy up, put trees in, set them benches.
The reason that the panel didn't decide on this was because they didn't know who owned the land. I think councillor Austin, it's part of a meeting that they, that they held. So I think councillor Austin would have said if there was something untoward. But we believe it's TDC. Yeah, would you, would you brief this out?
The email following my question on ownership of the land. The land is owned by TDC and leased to your leisure. All parties have agreed to the scheme in principle. And we recently had a site meeting of stakeholders with councillor Austin present, unfortunately, she's not here now. The contractual details have yet to be finalised. The applicant's own view is that it would be best for the land to be adopted by RTC rather than by Residence Association, as this would guarantee its status as a long-term community asset. That is a comment you may wish to disregard. Once the above is agreed, we can start work.
We should disregard that for now. Hang on, I think I, councillor Nixie first. And then councillor Wing put her hand up. Was you first, Peter? Sorry, I didn't see you, Peter, beg your pardon.
I'd like to know where that land is, because they're neighbours. I assume because it's your leisure, it's round the sports centre. I can't quite see from the photographs. Because. Yeah, I, I think.
Please do.
This is very. If you stand with your back that part of the as the car that goes up. The slope that goes up, towards as the car park where the lorries go off. So stand with your back towards that location centre. And it's that piece of land that faces the front. Where do you say you thought you should go?
There's a bean, there's a black bean. There's a home oak on the right-hand side, big home oak on the right-hand side. And there were some trees on that side that had been cut.
Okay, okay, can I? I mean, for me, there, that hasn't been confirmed without no, nothing in writing to say that that's been confirmed. My own view is I think that we should defer this until we get something in writing to, to say from the actual, and from the owners of the land.
So there are a couple of reasons we wanted this deferred, in the sense that at the time, we didn't know who the land was. And we're very conscious of like, we can't just go around and like tart somebody else's land up. Now, this round of monies, as you can imagine, like the last round was particularly tight. There is very little money compared to what was being asked of us. I mean, it was almost, you know, a massive difference. But the reason we stopped on, on this one, the other reason is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were wondering if it was owned by TDC or if it was owned by somebody that we could speak to. Wouldn't this, because we're always in, in the group, we're always trying to look for other ways to help people if we can't necessarily give them money. We were wondering whether this would come under a pocket park case with regards to TDC or something. Do you see what I mean? Because it's like, we don't necessarily have a lot of money to do it, but we might be able to orchestrate something or put them in the, in the.
That, I think, that, I think, we've got to get one consent from the district council.
I agree.
And they would want, probably want a licence.
Okay.
For it to be, for it to be done. And, and then, obviously, them as a group, they want to do.
Yeah, but at the time, we.
We might be able to help.
Yeah, exactly, but at the time, we had absolutely no idea. It's like, there's, there's some derelict land we'd like to tart it up. That's basically all we were given. And it was like, well, you know, that's a bit dangerous, does it say yes to that one? So.
I'm going to propose that we defer this. Sorry, did you? Sure?
Well, I do want to come in before you actually do the vote on the whole lot.
Oh, come in now then, come in? Oh, on another one? Yeah, okay, well, that's fine. So I've deferred, I'm going to propose defer of this until we get the, for them to get the information in writing so that we have that.
Yes.
Do I have a seconda, please? That's a head reason, all those in favour, please show, thank you. Right, if there, if there is, and what I was going to say is if there is anybody who has a comment to make, rather than a comment, but it's got to be a substantial comment in relation to one of the other ones that's on the events fund or the Ramsgate Fund that have already been dealt with by our panel. So now or forever, hold your peace.
I wanted to mention at least one, possibly two about the events fund. If I'd read this right firstly, we appear to have a substantial under spend from that fund. So we haven't spent all of it. And I don't know if I've done my maths right, but it looked like there was a lot of money from that fund that hadn't been spent. And I did check it out with Eileen and I think.
For this, you mean for this quarter?
I wasn't sure if we were.
Yeah, we, we were on, because, because there were a couple of. There were a couple of things that are coming up, so Christmas.
In the next quarter.
Exactly, that type of heading. And, and there were a couple of things here in both that were not suitable, unfortunately, for one day and another.
Yeah.
So Chair, I did want to come back to the consortium Lumiere event.
What, what number is it, sorry?
Was it the church? Second to the end of the event.
Page fifteen.
Is it an E number? Events.
Councillor Criddon, is it EF21GB Carnival? Yes. Yes.
All right.
Page fifteen, members.
Thank you.
That's, that's a considerable underfunding. And my concern is that at that level of short funding, that event will either fail to really deliver what they want to deliver. And they have got already funding from the Canterbury Diocese. However, there is information that I, I can say now that actually wasn't available to the Grants Committee and still really is only, is in discussion because it's information that's part of the current discussions for the budget setting for town promotion. And that is, I don't know if everyone remembers, but we don't have a New Year's Eve event this year because we cancelled the fireworks. And what we would, what we haven't done is we haven't got anything else to replace it at the moment. And it would be good if we could replace it with something. What we would, what we also have is the council events fund is really underspent because we scaled back on the D-Day celebration event earlier in the year. So what we could do is to take the money to put on additional event, or events, to make up for what is joining the dots with the lighting exercises out of that. And for Rebecca to do it.
Getting a bit convoluted.
Well, I'm sorry, but it is, it is what it is, Chair. For Rebecca to put those events on would not give us as good value for money as if we fund this event. This event is actually offering not just a New Year's Eve event or a couple of little things going on. It's actually offering a month of different things, plus a pre-entry into it for a lot of workshops, working with the community and everything else. On our own efforts, we cannot match the kind of events that the consortium would be able to put together.
Can I bring you down to what it is that you want?
Yes, that's, that's the explanation. So I would like them to have the funding. However, one of the options that I have considered is that we could wire the money, obviously this has to go through FNGP first, from the council events fund over to the community events fund to pay this.
Right, if, hold fire with that, hold fire with that, and I'll come back to you if you want to make a proposal.
I don't know.
Other speakers.
I know Dave wants to.
Other speakers, I won't see.
But if council wants to wire the money from the council events fund, I'd be quite happy to look at that. Bring him back, bring that, bring a recommendation back. Then we could look at this particular application in the light of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the only, the only thing that worries me about that, Chair, is that the delay in allocating this funding will impact on their ability to get the organisation into place.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to agree that, I mean.
Okay.
Without looking at the wiring first, because there are other applications up here that we haven't been very generous to.
Absolutely, councillor Everington?
I'm just curious, how much money are you talking about there?
Well, it depends on whether or not this meeting would want to give more than £2,000 out of the events fund tonight. Otherwise, I'm looking at £8,000 to make up the difference between the two each from the council events fund to the.
Councillor Wing?
I know, I, what, it, it did work, so there's nobody saying. I quickly looked it out of my head and it was no, sorry.
Councillor Nixie?
Thank you. So first of all, you've got to understand this, what we are looking at is the application in front of us and the information on the application. And that's one of the reasons, you know, that we really focus on. Now, there's a few things with this particular application. The application in question mentions things that are going on at Christmas, a lot of which are RTC's things. So they're saying all of these things happened. When you broke it down, it wasn't them, it was us. Got what I mean? And so, and those things cost money. And so if we're going to put money into something, you know, the time for technicians and stuff like that. It was, when you started clearing it out, sorting the weekly chaff, the, the amounts that they were actually going to do versus what they said was going to happen on the day and so on and so forth, was very limited as to their input. The other thing is, this is, we looked at applications that are put in by different groups of people and we always look at priority for one outside the area and two that people are new and stuff like that, you know. And so this is an application put in by somebody, it's her third application for a large event in the year. And unfortunately, the last large event that was done by this particular group go down particularly well in the town. The application itself was written in a style which was sort of, not, not the best. It wasn't written the best way, let's just put it like that, to the point where it's like, you either, you know, give it to us or, or, you know, you lose out style. And it was like, all very, and we understand that, but we were looking at what we could actually promote for the town. In fact, it was a lighting event. And it came down to, these are the things that we thought would enhance what Ramsgate Town Council is already doing. We aren't, we haven't got the money, as in part of the application, although it's, it's, it's not particularly. Obvious, but we are paying this person's wages as well. And we, we were prioritising groups of people that haven't had monies or have monies that do things voluntarily and stuff like that. And so when you looked at the application, £2,000, which is what we offered, on top of what this group has already had throughout the year and what it was actually going to produce, isn't as unrealistic as you see. You know, you're, you're being presented with, well, they want 10 grand and we're only giving them two. But actually, when you break it down, we did a lot of deliberation over this. It was actually a really fair assessment of what we could offer them.
I just had a quick word with stepacy, town clerk, and ever sort of the opinion that here, dealing with the events fund and the Ramsgate Fund, that we can't, we can't wire money at this, at this place here at the, at the moment to some, to something else. You've either got to decide on this particular part, which, this, this particular event, whether we give them the money that has been allocated by the panel or you come, you, you agree to come up with money from somewhere else within that fund. Or, or else, because I, I agree with you, I think we should decide this here. And because it would be wrong not, not to. Because if we delay it any, any further, because we could, we're talking about, it'd have to come back to the next council.
Members, if you wish to decide this from the events fund, the actual balance of the events fund, if all of these goes through as they are, is 16,500 is left for the next two quarters. So bear that in mind, thank you. I just wanted to ask, really, to what extent the, the community workshops and groups were also taken into account, what would lead into the parades and everything else that were planned? Because that seems to me like the actually valuable part of it that's hidden from the financial, but it's still.
We talked at this, about this at length, actually. And we have, you know, we've got 16,000 pounds, it's very difficult making these decisions. And there's so many worthy applications coming in, and we thought that this was fair.
I'll, I'll give you the opportunity now, councillor Criddon, to put forward a motion for this. Because you. for this because you spoke up for, you, you asked for this to be discussed and it would be unfair of me to put forward the motion to pay as, as the, as the panel would suggest it without you getting your chance. So.
I, I think the challenge is, I know that we can't ask for the virament tonight because it's, I can't just bring it tonight. And it's literally only in the last couple of days, as I've been looking at the, the papers. Um, we would be looking, um, at trying to do something extra ourselves out of the, um, uh, council fund, events fund. Um, I actually think that it would be more economical for us to do it, but it has to go through F and G P. So, um, yeah, exactly. And I, and I know, you know, um, I know that, I knew that when I, I started this, but, um, I'm not sure the best way forward because obviously that is, I mean, we could give the two thousand pound now, um, and then, um, take it to F and G P. I don't know when the next F and G P is.
Good on me, good on me. Ask you to be specific about the money that, that you would want to put forward.
Sorry.
It's October the second, but we could have a, we could have a touch of a.
Sorry.
Just, you're not finished, are you?
Well, it was just about, sorry, I've just read it because I thought when you said that, I thought, just to point out, it does say to recommend to council two thousand pounds as allocated to the applicant for the event, events budget towards the lantern workshop and parade. So it was specifically, we were quite specific about what we wanted. So we decided that the, the workshop and the parade were the best part of it because I promise you, there was an awful lot that just didn't, it didn't bring value for money, but we thought that was important. So that two thousand pounds was for that, sorry, just.
Okay, uh, can, can I just bring the Deputy Town Clerk?
The information I have with regard to the lantern parade is that it will be a month-long, um, workshop process for, for children mostly. Um, and then it will culminate in the, into the lantern parade on New Year's Eve, which as you say, will give us a New Year's Eve event. Um, the lanterns, as they are created, will be in shop windows. Um, the illuminations will be in shop windows for months. This, I've got this from the town promoter, she's told me this. Um, and that's, that's it, that's all I've bought.
Okay, as you can only.
In that case.
Bring it from the, come up with a figure.
In that case. Front of me because I, I haven't, I can't get it up on my screen. Um, the amount of two thousand for the lantern workshop and parade was against a bid of about four thousand for the lantern workshop and parade. I think it jeopardises even being able to spend, um, that money if we don't match that figure. That's what they're saying the lan- lantern workshop and parade will cost. And we need to fund.
So are you proposing, are you proposing that we give them the full amount they've asked for?
I, if, if, if the committee only want us to, um, fund the lantern workshop and parade, then yes, I would like to fund the whole of the lantern workshop and parade.
So, that's four thousand. So you.
Uh, uh, it's not exactly four thousand, I think it's four thousand three hundred. Four thousand three hundred.
You're proposing that we give four thousand three hundred pounds?
Okay, um, oh.
Okay, so, uh, just. We have a seconder for that, please. Council O, okay. Council Nixie.
Uh, and the other thing again that wasn't, wasn't on there is, is what we gave them last year, which we helped fund and they did it. And I don't, I can't remember what it was.
Two thousand.
But it was two thousand pounds, which is another reason why we gave them that. So they did it last year for two thousand pounds. That means, I, so yes, I mean, I would stand a possibility up, but, but we were really considered on this one. I mean, especially as, you know, we, we're aware of all the aspects of it and what it brings to Ramsgate Town, Town. But we, we didn't just, you know, put a pin in the.
I'm, I'm not, Council Nixie, I'm not challenging that.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
What I'm saying is that there are discussions in, um, in the preparation for the next town promotion meeting that won't be favoured to.
No, but forget that, that's, that's irrelevant, it's irrelevant here. Yeah, you put in whatever request you like. So we've got a proposal and it's been seconded. So all those in favour of giving the full amount of four thousand three hundred to this particular event. All those in favour, please show.
No, four thousand three hundred, not the ten thousand.
Yeah, four thousand three hundred.
Members, it's four thousand three hundred pounds towards the lantern workshops and parade. Lanterns, and that is, yeah.
All those in favour, please show if you agree to that. One, two, three, four, those against? Three, four, five, six, oh, that's lost, okay. Council Agreen has another, who's gonna want to put forward another proposal?
It's August now, um.
Not for long.
We have a, um, planning and infrastructure meeting in September where we could attach a F and G P committee meeting to. And we could then decide whether to wire the money from the council's events fund, if that's what we want to do.
So what's the date here?
What, what?
It's the eleventh.
Eleven.
November.
I'm away then.
Uh, having done that, we could then ask the events committee to look again at all those applications that don't have to be decided now. Now about three of them, that, that could wait until, amongst time.
What, the opposite, yeah.
I can't remember what.
There's, there's two, there's two that couldn't get anything.
Yes, because that's.
Because that's, either they weren't in the area or whatever, so.
Yeah, but there are some that are not going to take place until November or December.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. We're getting rather convoluted here and I wanted to keep this as straightforward as possible. But as usual, but as usual, we can't.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of that one, I could have done with the studio as well.
Well, I think it's important that the events committee have their say.
Yeah. Council Wynn, she's had a.
I, I, we're, we're all aware of the, uh, lantern parade. I, I mean, I think I've taken apart the last few years. What I can't see is the added value from last year to this year, given the added money they're requesting. Because if you, if you read the application, it, it mentions the lit-up boats, nothing to do with it. That's volunteers, I don't think they do that. And, and we've got a lead for this year, but that's very much residents-led thing that operates under the radar. Lighting of the Arches, TBC, the RTC, Oblis, Christmas Tree, us. Uh, into the wider framework that provides spectacle and entertainment to residents. So I, I sort of, I'm in agreement with the events committee. If we're going to give them more money, then I want to see the added value from last year to this year.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. We have a proposal. Um, can you actually spell that out? So. So can you do that, Chair?
Okay, that's great. Council Green's proposal is that an extraordinary ca- uh, meeting of F and G P committee uh, takes place on September the eleventh when we have planning committee, um, to discuss virament from the council's, council's events fund, uh, or budget.
All right, so a seconder for that.
To assist this.
Okay.
And that, and that's not only that. We bring those applications that can wait for them back to the, um, events committee.
So, if we do that, members, if we do that, this one doesn't get decided this evening. If you're not voting on that, you're not voting on whether they get the two thousand pound at all. Because there isn't a proposal, Council Queen's proposal is to basically move it. So, um, you under, as long as you understand that, as long as you understand that, okay? So it's a proposal, it's a proposal and a seconder. So can I have all in favour of that? We haven't got a second, oh, sorry, can I have a second, sorry, I beg, beg your pardon. But, what, what?
Finally at this meeting.
No, it won't be done, see, it's got. It would need to come, it would need to come to council, yeah. That is where it's done, dealt, dealt with.
So it'd be.
Twenty-fifth of September, it keeps, we'd have F and G P and then that, that will come forward to council, okay? So all in favour, please show. Are you sure what you're voting on? One, two, three, four, five.
Yes.
Those against? abstain? Okay, right, so that's carried, so that is that. I am now going to propose from, from the Chair that the rest of the items on the, um, events and, uh, uh, what's that, Ramsgate Fund.
Community Services.
And Community Services Fund. Uh, I, I propose we accept the recommendations of the panel to each and every one of those. Seconded by Council Nixie. All in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried.
Chair, sorry, why, plus the, um, we've got the guests here, sorry, Dominic, Friends of Spencer Square, do they know how much they, they will be receiving? Would we like to inform them this evening as they've?
Uh, I'll go if you feel.
It's a thousand.
A thousand pounds.
Yeah, a thousand pounds for the Friends of Spencer Square, tree and hedge product.
Thank you, all the hard friends of Spencer Square. We will spend the money carefully and report.
Spend it wisely, my friend.
Like to hear that.
Thank you.
Spend it wisely, my friend. Right, item three, um, to review the multiple gas supply quotes for the Customs House and Radford House and select the preferred contract for engagement. Eileen will take you through this, okay?
I know much about it. So we have, um, before you, I think if you look at this page here, they're listed rather than the draft.
Right, thanks.
Um, so we have, um, quotes from Crowe, from a supplier called Twenty-eight, from EDF and Ecotricity. Uh, they're various fixed terms, um. And, right.
Are you looking at the carbon zero ones as an option?
I think you, you, you're, you're on, uh, hundred percent green at the moment anyway.
Okay.
So I would, I would say that is, council wants to continue with.
Absolutely.
But it's not, I just, my decision.
Not going to be a treat this.
So. So Crown, Crown, uh, Crown Twenty-eight, hundred, hundred percent green. You have a twelve fixed, twelve-month fixed, which is carbon zero by direct debit payment, twenty-eight days at a time, annual contract seven thousand forty-eight pounds twenty-three. Or you can go on to a twenty-four-month fix, carbon zero, um, giving you seven thousand two hundred and three thirty-five. Those are fixed.
Which prices.
Fixed prices.
Members, any comments?
I guess we go on to, yeah, do.
With Crown.
Yeah, with Crown, they're gonna go up.
Yeah, seconder please. That's Everington. All in favour, please show. Thank you, it's carried, thank you very much.
Chair, can I, can I just ask, are we doing all we can to reduce our energy usage? I mean, I don't know, staff have got to come, what do you have, but have we implemented looking at, uh, I know them.
That's, that's what, that's what Dean, that's what Dean does. And, and Dean, Dean keeps his eyes on all, all of that, all of the time. Uh, not all the time, I sleep sometimes. Um, but, um, you know, as far, that's, that's part of his job, actually do that, Council Queen. So, you know, I'm reasonably assured, um, that, 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 that is the case. So, um, that's carried, was it?
That's carried, yes.
That's carried, okay. Um, right, item four of five, receive a report from, um, Town Clerk uh, to consider how to proceed with decorative lighting repair details therein.
Okay, basically, members, we have the technicians, uh, doing work on the besting lighting, doing a brilliant job, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, however, we do need, um, an electric, qualified electricians to come in and finish this work. Um, so we, East Saunders do work for us, they've come in with a quote for four thousand two hundred and forty-three seventy-five uh, to get on with this work, um, because we do feel we need electrical contractors.
Members, any comments on that? Okay, so I propose.
We do have Maxine here if they want to ask any questions.
I, I propose acceptance of, uh, Sunda's quote. Seconded, Council Nixie, all in favour, please show. Thank you very much, that's carried. Okay, right, item six, uh, policy and procedures. That's to consider and approve a draft honorary freeman and free woman scheme. Now, let me just say, both Eileen and myself were concerned about the terms of free, of a free man and a free woman. However, it's part of the legislation, so we can't change it. Uh, it's obviously been here since January the eighth or something. Um, so the, the, the Town Clerk has come up with, um, basically revised policy. Um, it's been there for you to have the butchers out. Um, so, um, obviously I've gone through it, I can't see, uh, any particular issues with it. Um, so this is a, obviously a rare thing, um, that's, that's happened over time. Um, although you can have three in a year evidently, I'm surprised by that. But, um, uh, so, members, have you got any comments in relation to it? If not, there's no one shouting, I propose acceptance of the policy. Definitely, Council Nixie, all in favour, please show? That's carried, thank you.
Um, members, to be a honorary freeman or freeman, you, you can drive your sheep through the town if you wish.
You fish off the finger as well.
I think you can fish off the pier.
Nah, right, item six, um, installation, I like that, installation. Yeah, I would have put inauguration, but now you are. Um, yes, uh, I'll pass you over to Eileen who will, who will take you through the inauguration of the new Lord Warden of the sink pool.
Um, they have decided on Admiral Sir George Sambellas, I may have said that incorrectly, to become, uh, the new Lord Warden. He will be, um, installed, um, on the twenty-ninth of October this year, eleven AM at Dover Castle. The cost to attend is fifty pounds, um, and with the chairs going, I believe the mayor, the mayor is going and the Town Clerk at the moment, so we have three people representatives. But if anyone else would like to go, they are welcome to give me their names and they may attend, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I just mention the sink pools? I think there's one sign, there may be another one, is, which is on Ramsgate Margate Road. Think around about the volume. There doesn't seem to be any other information in our town about our sink pool. Is it something we could maybe?
Not at all, this information.
Arm of the.
Don't cross talk, please.
Whatever you are, there is absolutely no heritage, there's no information anywhere. Is it something we can ask the Harbour Heritage Group to?
We're, we're quite happy to, we're quite, I'm quite happy to ask Town Clerk to have a look into that. I don't really think there's a lot anywhere else, to be quite honest.
I don't, because I think there's two signs, but I can't find the other one, but.
Council Moore?
On the road.
Hang on a minute, uh, Council Moore?
Think you've contacted this information, this information office, the House of Health that's in there.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that.
Council, my question.
Uh, Council Mackinson?
There's, there's another sign on, is it Piers Street where the laundry's done? Anyway, there's one around, there's another one around there, but we're not actually a sink pool. We're at, we're what's called an arm of the sink pool.
Well, there you go, we need more information.
But there was only five original.
It's an opportunity.
So we're not, we're not a sink pool.
Yeah, but we are in, in accordance with, uh, when the king got crowned.
In accordance with what?
When the, when the, when the king was crowned, they're as sink pools.
Right.
Okay, so it's, they're, they are considered now as the same as the other sink pools. How's that?
One's just going to read up from Wikipedia, we are, yes, you're right, Pat, we are sink pools.
Yes.
But with one of your listeners, but we are.
Yeah.
For members.
Limb.
Yeah.
This one's...
Okay, so members, members, if I could stop you all talking, cross. Um, sorry to be a pain, but, um, so if you, if you wish to go, please let, um, is it you, Eileen?
Yes, yeah.
Please let, please let Eileen know if you wish to go. Okay, so then there's no other decision to be, uh, made on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
At this cost, I mean, it'd be a great thing to go to, but do we pay for it ourselves?
Can if you want.
Well, it's better than...
Well, that's the price we've been...
Members, we can send 14 delegates at £50 a head.
Yeah, so we, we would be looking, we would be looking, the Town Clerk would be looking to pay for that. Except they won't pay for a dress, it won't pay for a whistle. If you're gonna go, you've got, you've got to posh yourself on, yeah.
If they won't accept James, that counts for the hour.
Yeah. It's, uh, 29th of October at 11am. Um, okay, members, thank you. Right, I'm now, um, calling for the exclusion of the public press. Uh, recommended that under the Public Bodies, um, Act 1960, I won't go into all the other stuff, that we, uh, now exclude the press and public, uh, to hold
A seconder.
That disclosure of exempt information, so, yeah. I propose that, seconded, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Thank you everybody for watching and I'm sorry about this, but unfortunately we need to do this in private, thank you.